We call to order the regular meeting for Thursday, August 23rd, 2018. Just before we start, please silence your phones or any electronic devices. If you have any blue slips to speak on an item, please fill that blue slip out prior to the item coming up and give them to Ms. Jessica. We have our invocation and pledge allegiance to Mr. Landry.
Mr. Brain.
Father God, we just love you, we thank you for this day, we thank you for all your meaningful blessings you lay upon each and every one of our lives, Father. Just ask that you give us wisdom and discernment tonight, Father, in decisions we make and the decisions that we make, Father, please you. We love you and we ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Place the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Brain. Madam Secretary, roll call.
Yes, sir. Mr. Abshire?
Here.
Mr. Andrew Pontin?
Here.
Mr. Brain?
Here.
Mr. Collins?
Here.
Mr. Farnum?
Here.
Mr. Gilery?
Here.
Mr. Mandrie?
Here.
Ms. Mayow?
Here.
Mr. McMillan?
Here.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
Mrs. Trimmie?
Here.
Vice President White?
Here.
And President Baer's.
Here. Thank you, ma'am. So, item number four is a six o'clock action. We will go forward until that time to number five. Take appropriate action on applications for liquor and beer permits. Mr. Crane.
Mr. President, we have two applications before you tonight. We recommend that they be issued.
Second, I have a motion by Mr. Foreham and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item six, consideration of approving payment of all current invoices and advice regarding monthly budget to actual comparisons. I've got a motion by Mr. Andrew Pontin and a second by Mr. Abshire. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item seven, consideration of approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated July 19th, 2018. I got a motion by Mr. Gilery and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item eight, there's no action necessary. The applicant has withdrawn the request. Item nine, take appropriate action on a request by East Preon Lake Properties, LLC to rezone from light industrial to heavy industrial to allow industrial development, concrete crushing facility in the 4,500 block of East Preon Lake Road. The planning and zoning board met on Tuesday, August 21st, 2018, and voted unanimously to recommend that the request be granted with conditions. I got a motion to uphold, uphold planning and zoning by Mr. Gilery and a second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item ten, take appropriate action on a request by LMP Properties, LLC et al. to rezone from mixed residential to light industrial to allow industrial development, contractor shop and storage yard at 110 East A-Bear Road. The planning and zoning board met on Tuesday, August 21st, 2018, and voted unanimously to recommend that the request be granted with conditions. We got a motion to uphold by Mr. McMillan and a second by Mr. Latour. We do have discussion. Mr. Scott.
Yeah, can you please let the record show that I recuse myself from this item?
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Any further discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Excuse me. Item eleven, take appropriate action on a request by TPA Investments, RV, LLC to amend ordinance number 6182, stipulation number one, to allow a revised site plan, 45 recreational vehicles spaces total at 165 Reeves, Reeves Road. The planning and zoning board met on Tuesday, August 21st, 2018, and voted unanimously to recommend that the request be granted with conditions. I have a motion to uphold by Mr. White and a second by Mr. McMillan. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item twelve, take appropriate action on a request by WSM Development, LLC to rezone from single-family residential to manufactured home park to allow a manufactured home park, 396 spaces at 7,300 Tom A-Bear Road. The planning and zoning board met on Tuesday, August 21st, 2018, and voted one, four, and six against to recommend that the request be denied. I have a motion to uphold planning and zoning by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection?
Mr. President, I think you have some speakers. If you would call the applicant up, I don't know if they're here or not.
Okay, is the applicant here this evening?
Mr. President, seeing that the applicant is not here to speak on behalf of the project, unless there's any objection to my motion, I don't know that there's really any use in...
I would second that motion.
And those folks all coming up here to speak, unless there's an objection to the motion.
Not at all.
I see no objections, sir.
So, with that, further discussion and there's no objections? Item carries. Item thirteen, take appropriate action on a request by May Dale Blaney et al.
Mr. President, would you tell these people that the...
Ladies and gentlemen, so, we just upheld what planning and zoning did the other night. So, the request is denied. Let's... I'm sorry, sorry, sir. Stand. Okay. Thank you, sir.
That's it.
All right. Item thirteen, take appropriate action on a request by May Dale Blaney et al. to rezone from mixed residential to light commercial to allow commercial development at 3924 Old Spanish Trail. The planning and zoning board met on Tuesday, August 21st, 2018, and voted unanimously to recommend that the request be granted with conditions. Got a motion to uphold by Mr. McMillan and a second by Ms. Mayo. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item fourteen, consideration of adopting ordinance is allowed at disposition of the police jury's interest in and donation to the city of Lake Charles for each of the following adjudicated properties. A, 420 North Blake Street, and B, 531 North First Avenue. Got a motion by Mr. Abshire and a second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? Excuse me. Any objection? Item carries. Item fifteen, consideration of adopting resolutions approving the following items as approved by the Cal学生 library board of control. A, adopt a resolution approving the purchase of property located at 1601 Lorry Street in Vinton, Louisiana, and B, adopt a resolution approving the purchase of property located at 102 North Pine Street in Dequinty, Louisiana. Got a motion by Mr. White and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Sixteen, consideration of adopting a resolution approving a cooperative endeavor agreement between the police jury and Smoke &amp; Barrel Incorporated for the use of the parish courthouse grounds for the inaugural Smoke &amp; Barrel celebration. Got a motion by Ms. Mayo and a second by Mr. McMillan. Would you have discussion? Mr. McMillan.
Yeah, if I could call you up just a second.
Name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Nathaniel Alluret, 5781 Gosferre Road. Sorry about that. Nathaniel Alluret, 5781 Gosferre Road, Lake Charles, Louisiana. And this is Adam Fontenot.
Adam Fontenot, 329 and a half Broad Street.
Nathaniel, I got the floor in a second, so I'm going to ask you a couple of questions. I'm excited about this event. I tell you, I loved Rougee Blonde when it was down here at the courthouse and having this event here. I hope you're just as lucky and have the participation and get the good weather. One of the questions that people may want to know is the money that's being raised for this event, who will it go to?
So, the beneficiary charity for this year is going to be the United Way of Southwest Louisiana.
Good deal. It's an exciting event. Glad to have you all here. I know you're going to bring in, from what I understand, people from outside the area, some real professionals, and it should be a good day. If you want to say anything else about the event, I'll give you the floor.
Sure. We'll just give you a quick little rundown, but yes, we are working on recruiting professional barbecue vendors from Houston all the way over to Baton Rouge. The entertainment lineup, we're very excited about. We've got two Grammy Award winners in Louis Michaud of the Lost Bay Ramblers and Wayne Toops, and then we also have a fun band out of Austin called Mayo &amp; Broussard. The event's a little bit unique. It does have a ticketed VIP area that'll be similar to some other festivals which have been held at that location, but it's also got a general admission area that's open to the public. So, that gives us a lot more reach in trying to market the event as regional because it's not going to be capped at a certain amount of tickets. So, we're really hoping to kick it off this first year at a high level and generate some excitement, you know, to drive some people into town.
Two important factors I think you left out is LSU's away and McNeese doesn't have a game that day. So, everybody can come out and enjoy this festival here. Thank you, Mr. President.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. How, they didn't have to go far because one of the professionals is right here.
Yeah. I spoke with you the other day.
I'm in the barbecue contest.
Yes, sir.
It'll be a great one.
All right. Very good.
We will not be going.
All right.
Any further... Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good evening.
Any further discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Seventeen, consideration of adopting a resolution approving an agreement to purchase and sell for the Ham Reed Road extension project in Ward Three. Got a motion by Mr. Brain, a second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Eighteen, consideration of adopting a resolution regarding the following requests. A, authorizing the submittal of local government assistance program, LGAP grant applications. B, execution of agreements with the Louisiana Office of Community Development for said grant awards, and C, execution of sub-recipient agreements with said special service districts for said grant awards. Got a motion by Mr. Andrew Pontin and a second by Mr. Foreham. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Nineteen, consideration of adopting resolutions where applicable for each of the following items as requested by the Human Services Department. A, approving a grant application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for a regional coordinated entry program, and B, approving the submittal of a sub-grant application to the Louisiana Workforce Commission Community Services Block Grant to provide services and programs. I have a motion by Mr. Collins and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Twenty, consideration of authorizing the parish purchasing agent to advertise for a request for qualifications, RFQ, for professional engineering services for the development review permitting process. I've got a motion by Mr. White, a second by Mr. Latour, Mr. Foreham.
Thank you, Mr. President. Wes, could you kind of give us a rundown on what this is going to mean for the average developer here on the delays that they see?
I'm sorry, Mr. Foreham. Which item is it?
It's Tim.
Yeah, Tim, I think that's it.
If I may, Mr. Foreham, what this is going to do is allow us to bring in a consultant to help us with the overflow, sort of a safety net as part of that review process so we can go out and get that additional technical review assistance that we need and so kind of make sure that that process continues to move forward in a expedient manner.
So, I know right now there's quite a backlog of things that you guys have to review, and quite often you all are backed right up to the deadlines that you all put on yourself. So, this should speed things up quite a bit.
Yes, sir. Just to kind of give you an idea, we've had approximately 340 submittals and 75 subdivisions over the past 12 months, so it has been kept us busy.
Quite a needed help, right?
Yes, sir.
Good. I support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foreham. Any further discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Twenty-one, consideration of adopting a resolution in support of Mr. Tony Gilery and his candidacy for third vice president on the Police Jury Association of Louisiana Executive Board. Got a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? Mr. Gilery.
Just right quick. I just want to say, we are losing two great people, Mr. Andrew Pontin and Ms. Trimmie, on the board, and they have been great to the board and have helped a lot, and we're losing two great people, and so, guys, we need to have somebody come up.
Tony, I'm having second thoughts, so don't say that.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
Actually, I'm having people call me like that. Putting pressure on me.
Call you what?
The wrong.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gilery. Mr. Andrew Pontin.
Thank you, Tony, for the kind words, and I wish you well in your endeavor to become the third vice executive board or Police Jury Association of the state of Louisiana. I really believe you're going to be elected. I'm not saying that just to say it. You're well respected with the executive board and all of the parishes throughout, and all those that I've met. I don't know of anybody who's ever had a negative word to say about you, so I believe that you're the man for the job, and I wish you well. I won't be here, but if you want to invite me to something, I'll show up.
You will be invited.
Thank you, Mr. President. I yield back.
So, any further discussion? Any objection?
Yes, I do object. Thank you. I do object. Just put that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. With that, the motion carries. Twenty-two, consideration of adopting a resolution of condolences to be forwarded to the family of the late Dr. John William Milton III. Got a motion to adopt by Mr. Brain and a second by Mr. White. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. We've got a point of personal privilege. I would like to call on Mr. McMillan to tell us about his recent travels.
First off, I want to thank all the jurors that made it out to the Coach Williams opening of the groundbreaking that road. We all received an opportunity of invitation to go to Washington, D.C. As you can see on the screen, we had a event where the Alabama-Louisiana leaders were asked to come to this event. Let me just tell you a little bit about the timeline and what happened on this trip to Washington, D.C. We left here on a Wednesday morning, got to Washington about 1:00. We had a briefing at 6:00 at one of the buildings by the Capitol where they told us that, hey, the next morning, this is what you're going to do. We went to a tour of the White House that we had to be there for 10:30, so we had to go in about an hour early for clearance, got to see a tour of the White House. Then at 1:00 at the Eisenhower Annex Building, we had these speakers come in and talk to us, and basically what this is coming from is President Trump is wanting to get the local leaders involved and see what our problems are, like we have here in southwest Louisiana with the I-10 Bridge and dredging of the Ship Channel and things like this. We had an opportunity to hear from these leaders, and we had an opportunity to speak to some of these leaders and visit with them. As you look at some of the pictures we're going through, we went, started at 1:00, we got out about 5:00 that afternoon, and then I flew home the next day. If there is another invitation, I say every juror that has an opportunity to go, you really should get a chance to go on this. It was a really fun time. We heard from Kellyanne...
Conway.
Conway. Conway. Lost her. Kellyanne Conway right there, she spoke about the opioid crisis. It is a major crisis throughout America. We lost over 64,000 Americans with the opioid crisis. She said they had a, take your pill back day where they brought in over 900,000 pills, pounds of pills, not pills, pounds of pills. This crisis is something that is raising the crime rate, it's escalating all types of really bad things in America, and we're losing people left and right. One of the things that stuck home with me was she said, this is not a black, white, old, young, it's an issue that affects everybody in America, this opioid crisis. Fentanyl is one of the things they're really looking at, some of these drugs that are coming in from China and Mexico have fentanyl in them, and if you just take one pill with that in it, you're gone or you're dead. So, that was a great speech by her. If you flip to right there, that's the Secretary of Interior, Zicky was his name, and he spoke and was really neat of how they're trying to streamline some of the things that are happening in Washington. He gave an example, if you had a Corps of Engineer dam and you had some salmon and some trout in the stream, and you had a river and you were trying to build a subdivision, you'd have to deal with a Corps of Engineers, a lot of life officers, Department of Interior, and Irving and Housing. So, they're trying to get through all this red tape of Washington and make it work better. I can tell you, all these people that spoke were very pro-President and said that he's doing a very good job and he's communicating with them. Our final speaker was Jeff Sessions, Secretary of State. Yes. No. Attorney General. Excuse me. Attorney General Jeff Sessions, and he spoke about the crime rate and the illegal aliens that are coming in the United States and what they're doing to try to combat that. Really good speaker. Of course, the people from Alabama were there, so we did get a chance to go up there and speak with him. There was a lot of other under secretaries that came and spoke. Secretary of Transportation was there, Environmental was there, and just a number of other budget, they were all there to talk. I have a list of names that they gave us that you can use if you need to call someone in Washington, D.C. on an issue. Jessica's got them, they're going to be up here in a minute. Before you leave tonight, you will have that list. It was a quick trip, but it was a well-informed trip, and I was honored to be here to represent this jury. They had a number of other jurors from out of Louisiana, as well as some mayors and some state representatives there for Louisiana, and a number of mayors, county commissioners from the other states. But a really good trip, a really informative trip, and hopefully some of this information I'm bringing back to you. If you need it, you'll have it with those phone numbers. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Gilery.
And how, you're right. One of the things that they talked about is getting more people next time we go, the numbers up, so we can have enough to represent Louisiana. Thank you for going to town.
Any further discussion? We'll take a short recess until our 6:00. I would like to call the meeting back to order. We have a 6:00 action in order to hold a public hearing. Ordering, as a result of a notice provided to owners of the properties described below, ordering said owners to show cause as to why the structures on said properties should not be condemned. Item A, 2274 Dennison Road, LeBlu Settlement area.
This is one manufactured home with an addition. The owner of record is Gary Matthews, Ed Upx. We recommend this structure be condemned and removed in 30 days.
Please move to condemn.
So, we have a motion to condemn by Mr. Latour and a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Is the owner... Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Gary Matthews. I'm the owner of 2274 Dennison Road. I live at 2282 Dennison Road next door. My sister-in-law is living in the trailer in front of the building in question.
She's what?
My sister-in-law lives in a trailer in front of the building in question. There was a 500-square-foot front porch on the front of it that was completely dilapidated. It was unsafe. The roof was falling in and all that. I've since cleared that totally off, and I wanted to request a chance to, or opportunity to make repairs to the main structure there. It'd be a hardship to demolish it and store the stuff that's in it now.
Okay, we have some questions for you. Mr. Latour?
Could you come up and please just kind of tell us a little backstory of what's going on with this property, please?
Well, we were called about this structure because of the condition, and as you can see by the photographs, it's in extremely bad condition. To be honest with you, I don't know how you'd ever, how this thing would ever be livable again. I mean, it's just too far gone.
Yes, sir. I've had several, to be honest with you, I've had several phone calls about this structure, so I'd still move forward with the dilapidation of the project, of the building, but I do appreciate you coming up and giving your piece.
Yeah, it's not occupied and won't be occupied. There's no power, no water. It's strictly storage.
Mr. Landry.
So, you're just trying, you're going to repair, at one time, somebody, it was occupied.
I lived in there 15 years ago.
So, you're just wanting to make it a storage building?
Yes. Yes, sir.
And you've torn off a porch that was attached to it?
Yes, it was in bad, really bad shape.
So, are these pictures from today, Mr. Robinson?
No.
Last week. So, when did you finish tearing off the porch?
Actually, I don't think he showed the porch. Did you show the front?
Right there.
Wow. So, it caught on fire?
No, it was just storm damage.
Oh, okay. It looked like a fire. Yeah, that looks pretty rough. So, how long is it going to take you? I mean, how long would it take you to repair it?
I would like to have cleared that part out. That was today? Okay. I have a picture from today, but it doesn't show all that. I'm sorry. What was your question?
Question is, how long is it going to take you to repair it to where it will not be condemnable anymore?
I would really need to know some direction there, why it's being condemned, other than I've cleared that room out, the roof. I can repair that roof there if that's the only problem.
Well, I mean, it looks like there's, anybody can go into the building just from the pictures. It's not secured. Yeah, that thing, it's in a mess.
I can enclose it.
You would probably, there's a list of things that they go by, and from looking at it, probably every box on that list is probably checked off.
Yeah, I haven't seen the report.
Go ahead, Mr. Robinson.
On January 29th of this year, the gentleman came into our office and a demolition permit was issued, and he had until March the 1st to complete, and he didn't.
Okay. So, I guess now they're not going to demo, he changed his mind and is trying to repair.
I did demo the part that was dilapidated.
Part of it. Yeah, I mean, that's a, so I mean, like, how long are you talking about? I mean, you're going to do this in 30 days or you're going to...
I don't, no, I couldn't do it in 30 days. It depends on what's on the list. If it's just in... If it's just enclosing this.
Yeah, I mean, all that junk would have to be gone?
Actually, most of that junk is gone.
It would have to be secured, you know, I mean, it's got to have windows, doors, all of that to where nobody can get in there.
I would just enclose it without windows.
You know, I mean, the bad thing is it's already come in, going on since January, so I mean, I'm, I want to believe you, but I, I mean, if it's been eight months and we're not any further along than that, I don't.
So this is as it stands today?
Yes, sir.
Mr., excuse me, Mr.
Yeah, I'm good.
Mr. Latour?
Just from seeing everything and the amount of calls that I've received on this, I mean, me personally, I would vote to get it demoed. I mean, if you would like to be given thirty days to tear it down, I would vote for that. Other than that, I mean, if you do not, I'm sure the parish will get you a contractor that can do it, but I would still stand with tearing it down. We've had since January, I've been getting calls, numerous calls about this, so I yield back. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Latour. Mr. Gidney?
I'm good.
Any further discussion? We need a roll call vote on this?
Unless you.
All right, so we have a motion condemned, to condemn by Mr. Latour. Any further discussion?
If it's condemned, are you going to try to tear it down?
No, I would like to, I'll just have to find some money. I would like to salvage the lumber and stuff, but there's not a time.
I guess what I'm getting at is, does he need thirty days to tear it, to tear what he wants out of it, or do we just go ahead and go with it?
Well, if we condemn and it passes, he gets thirty days from today, I guess, it's the clock has started ticking, so he'll, he'll have thirty days to do it.
By default, he's got thirty days.
Well.
Thank you, Mr. Foreman. Mr. Gidney?
Just a quick question. I mean, Mr. Latour, I'm in agreement with what you're going to do. My question is, you said you would like to use it as a storage facility, something?
Yes, building supplies, furniture. Right now, there's building supplies, electrical supplies, plumbing supplies, wood trim, there's some furniture, some antique furniture in there.
Thank you, Mr. Gidney. Any further discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. B, 2336 OJ Road.
This structure has been removed, so there'll be no further action on this one.
All right, any further discussion? Any objection? Is the, so we don't even need to call for the applicant? Item carries. No action needed. C, 1044 Live Oak Street, Sulphur area.
This is one house. The owner is Robert Paul LeBlanc et al., and we recommend this structure be condemned and removed in thirty days.
So we've got a motion to condemn by Mr. Andrew Pott and a second by Mr. Scott. Any discussion? Oh, excuse me, do we have the applicant here to speak on this? Is the applicant here to speak on the 1044 Live Oak Street item? Any further discussion? Any objection? That item carries. D, West Burton Street, Sulphur area.
This is one manufactured home. The owner is a Nathan Thomas Burnett et al., and we recommend this structure be condemned and removed in thirty days.
Got a motion to condemn by Ms. Trimmie and a second by Mr. White. We have some discussion, Mr. Landry.
Why is there not an address on that item?
Well, because the structure was on an adjacent property, and the property was sold, and the, and the structure belonged to somebody else that happened to own the property next door, so they just moved it over to there and just left it. In fact, the people who bought the property moved it over.
Pass that by me one more time.
Yeah, in other words, the structure was, was on a piece of property that had an address. The property was sold where the, where this structure was. The adjoining property.
So the property was subdivided or got subdivided?
Well, it was already subdivided. It just got sold. So the structure belonged to the gentleman who owns the property next door, so the people who bought the property, they just moved it over on his side.
I've heard of it. Okay. So does it belong to the property owner?
Yes.
It does belong to the property owner, but it doesn't have an address?
Right. It's never been addressed.
It's never been permitted for that piece of property. They just moved it on.
Oh, you mean, you can't do that?
No.
Hey, it's an innocent mistake, you didn't know.
Oh, with the tractor, okay. All right, well, now that's clear.
Any further discussion? Is the owner of that here? All right, without any further discussion? Any objections? Item carries. E, 3260 Gil Drive, North Sulphur area. Mr. Robinson?
This property has one manufactured home and a carport, and the owner is a Becky Loyon Bogan, and we're recommending both of these structures be condemned and removed in thirty days.
All right, so I have a motion to get condemned by Ms. Trimmie and a second by Mr. Scott. Is the property owner here? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Becky Taylor Bogan and 22 Eucalyptus Street in Sulphur. It's the first time I've seen the trailer since it tore up. We were on vacation and a bunch of kids came in and tore everything out, windows, doors, took wind inside. Cops called me, we were on vacation, said they tore out the, everything that was in it, threw it out the windows, their thing was standing, I mean, the stove, everything was outside, and want to know what we're going to do about it. And I said, how old were these kids? And he said, they're kids, teenagers. And I said, no, I'm not. He said, you want to press charges? I said, no. The trailer's old, and we were planning on tearing it down, getting rid of it. I mean, it wasn't in this kind of condition at all. And the carport that's on the side of it is not attached to it. My dad had built it, and, well, my dad built the poles, Joe Simon built the adjacent, adjacent part. There is on one side, the opposite side of the trailer, there is like storage areas on each side in, on the carport. Good Lord. I'm glad I didn't go. But anyway, so I know we're going to tear this down. That is not a problem. We are definitely going to, we've got somebody, Jet's going to come in and condemn it and, I mean, completely tear it down. The only thing I would like to keep would be the carport part, because, I mean, we have, it's got a concrete drive into where the carport is, the carport's not attached, it's got poles, it's got a roof, we're going to put a new roof on it, put siding around on the side that has the two storage areas, and my son's going to build out there. So I was just trying to keep the, you know, part. Glenn went to get a permit to have it, for us to demo it, because Jet was going to start on it, and then they said we had to tear down the carport, too. So they said, well, if not, we have to come up here to talk to y'all about it. So I would really like to keep the carport. I mean, it's up to y'all. That's actually, somebody that rented there put that, I rented this trailer, this trailer's been a rent house for like twenty-something years, I've been trying to get rid of it, tried to sell it, tried to move it, tried, whatever, never could, so we just quit renting it, because every time I rented it, nobody wanted to, had to fight them every month to get notes, and I mean, it was a nice trailer when it first started. But, so I mean, I definitely will tear it down. I mean, I have somebody to tear it down. It's just the carport part I would like to keep.
Okay, we got it doubled. Mr. Andrew Pott?
Thank you, Mr. President. Becky, is it a metal carport?
It's actually, no, it's wood, it's got wood beam. My dad put the poles are metal, and it's into the concrete that's poured there into the driveway, and it's got a regular roof, it's got the big board. I mean, Joe Simon built it, that part of it, and, I mean, it's in okay shape except for it needs, on the ends, needs to be re-vinyl siding or brick or whatever Cody builds the house as. We're going to cover it.
Is it salvageable? I mean, if she did work on it, would you agree to do, Becky?
Yeah, that's what I said.
If it's not attached to the house?
No, it's not.
Well, I mean, you know, looking at it, I mean, in our opinion, we're still saying it's condemnable now. You know, if she wants to put enough money in it, you know, it could be salvageable.
And you want her to do that?
Oh, yeah. I mean, we're, we'll really have somebody look at it, too. You know, I mean, if they come in and say, it's not, you know, don't keep it because it's not worth it.
Well, I would recommend that ASAP, so that.
Yeah, yeah.
I would ask that we defer the carport until she gets back with David in a week.
Yeah, that's fine, and get somebody to look at it.
I'll add that to my motion, okay? I'll just add that to my motion.
Very good.
Okay, so we have a motion to, to tear down the home, but defer the carport for a week? Or until she gets?
If I can get, yeah, I don't know if I can get a contractor. Right now, getting contractors is kind of hard to get out there.
Get somebody to look at it.
Yeah, a contractor to look at it.
I was just going to say, we, I mean, you could give her thirty days, just like we're doing, I mean, because if you condemn the mobile home, they'll have to get that removed. And I could give them an extension on that if they need more time, but, I mean, thirty days, you can probably get a contractor out there to look at it, give you a recommendation on what you need to do.
Whether or not we need to keep it salvageable or whatever. I mean, I haven't been out there to know that, I mean, it might be, have termites all underneath it, I have no idea.
I think you do, I think you need to have somebody go look at it for you and just see if it's even worth.
Right.
Salvage it.
Wish they would just tore it down the way that it tore it up.
Do you agree with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we have a motion to.
To do what Wes said.
To do what Wes just said.
Condemn the mobile home. Give her, give her an extension of time to get with a contractor in thirty days on the, on the carport.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on that?
I'm good. That's exactly where I was.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Any objection? Item carries.
Thank y'all.
Item F, night, excuse me, 1698 Orledge Road, Vinton area.
This is one house. The owner is a Linda Ann Norwood Leach et al., and we recommend this structure be condemned and removed in thirty days.
Don't move.
Second. Okay, you've got a motion to condemn by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. White. Is the, the owner of the property or anybody in the audience here would like to speak on behalf of the owner? All righty. That being, I said.
Is this vacant?
Yeah, what's wrong with it?
Yeah, if they keep scrolling up, this house evidently flooded for one of the major floods over there, and it appears they just gutted part of it and just abandoned it. They just walked away from it.
Because just looking at the pictures, it looks like it has bones to it.
It does, but they just, they just left it. And we've, we've, we've tried and tried and tried to contact somebody, we've left letters taped to the doors, and we've, there has not been one single person contacted our office.
So we, so the owner? The owner's not here, anybody representing the owner's not here.
So what you're assuming is it hadn't changed hands, or has?
Yes, ma'am, we did a, we did a title search on it prior to the meeting, so it's, it's still in the same ownership.
And it, it looks like they've left the country.
Pretty much. We had to remove some junk on the property, we had to cut the grass, there was a lot of downed trees on the property, and I mean, it's just, they just left. They probably don't want to be found.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
Did somebody make a motion?
Yes, Chris.
Mr. Barris, you want to make a motion, or you, I mean, you want to tell me you make a motion?
Motion's made, a condemn by Mr. Landry and it was seconded by Mr. White. Applicants not, or, excuse me, the landowner's not here. Any further discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item. Anybody else? Item G, 133 Crane Road.
This is one manufactured home with an addition. The owner is Delta Equine Center LLC, and we're recommending this, these structures be condemned and removed in thirty days.
I got a motion to condemn by Mr. White, second by Mr. McMillan.
That isn't some of your property, is it, Mr. Crane?
No, sir.
Well, I didn't know it was on Crane Road.
It's spelled the same, but it's not, not a problem.
Well, maybe you were maybe in that corporation, they're the real owner. You can speak if you want, we'll let you come up here.
I did not develop the problem.
Is the property owner or someone representing the property owner here to speak on its behalf? Going here to speak on 133 Crane Road? Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. You don't get to go again. Point of personal privilege by Mr. McMillan, part two.
Yes, and I just, this just came up, so I'd like to share it with you, but you do have your letter, Jessica just gave you this. It says, Dear Mr. McMillan, thank you for attending the White House conference hosted by the Office of Intergovernmental Affairs. The administration is committed to building relationships with leaders at all levels of government. In doing so, we gain valuable insight on how we can best work together to serve the American people. Your engagement, feedback, and continued partnership will help us identify and respond to critical issues facing your community and our country. I am grateful for your service to our nation and to our great folks in Louisiana. God bless you and your family. Sincerely, Donald J. Trump. There we go. Thank you, Mr. President. You'll need to go to one of these, and really, might be the secretary, but anyhow.
Item twenty-three.
Thank you.
Move to adjourn.